Excited.
How's Lynn?
I'm good, how are you?
I'm good, for an old guy.
You don't know what old is yet.
You've got a good point, I can't always say that you can't.
It only gets better too.
Well, you know, I read that. I don't remember where I read it, I don't know if it's true or not, but it said, once you get seventy, the last few years are the best years of some of your life. Because everybody thinks you're old, everybody wants to do stuff for you. You just sit and watch them.
Not in my house.
Not in your house.
No, it said, how did you just throw him in?
My oldest son Matt, he don't think I can do anything. I'll do it for you, Dad.
Okay.
My grandson, the same way. Get away, Jim.
How are they, uh, is he out of fourteen?
Uh, today's his last day. He gets to play baseball tomorrow.
Ha, probably not.
Yeah.
Ninety percent chance.
Thank you, man.
Yeah, and he's been working out every day, uh, his pitching coach, Darryl Graham.
Okay.
So, he does, Darryl does good things with him. So.
Yeah, nice.
I'm just glad he didn't get sick.
Yeah, wonderful grace.
Yeah. Lynn? Why don't we move this up, we're gonna take them off, let's take them off. Yeah, I'll tell you what, I thought from the parking lot a little bit, but...
So did I. Thank you. What do I got? Who is this front? Okay. For your, oh, she's not here today. You, uh, you just clocked today, right?
Yeah.
Oh, this is the one I told her to sign.
Yes.
Okay. That was taken care of. Right. Okay, I got it. Thank you very much. Nine o'clock, please, on me in the flight. Uh, I'd like to lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Very good. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve, uh, the April twentieth minutes.
I'll make that motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Uh, Kendall's been sending out the, uh, party.
Yeah.
So, we can have an idea or go through the minutes prior to, so that's a good deal.
Yeah, that's a real, real nice deal.
Makes it, makes it a lot easier. Have we got an Eric Bailey here today?
I seen him pass through, yeah.
Speaking of Eric Bailey, you got a, you got a call from Blake Wilson?
Yes.
I did too.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, we can discuss that and we, and I know, I know what's went on with it, so we can have a little discussion, figure out what's the best plan about that. Morning, Eric.
Morning.
First off, uh, I've received a call from Eric, uh, from Blake Wilson.
Okay.
Um, Clifton said he got one too, and it's on Jayhawk Road.
Right.
And you and I've had this discussion more than once about Jayhawk Road.
Right.
And, and, uh, and other roads that's been affected. When they came in and they plowed the fiber in and they were right on the edge of our, our, uh, right of way.
Right.
The tailings got put into the road.
Right.
It's clay and what it's done is created a, a pothole scenario.
Right.
And rough. So, and this has been going on ever since they started plowing that fiber in back last spring, I think.
Right.
Uh, even, even the ones that we fixed, like, uh, if I hit you up on Ninety-Fifth and Main Street, and it's on the road, Seventy-Fifth and all those areas, uh, you know, it's still apparent that, that, that clay is gonna be a problem.
Right.
Until it just totally gets wore down. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So, I know you're out on Jayhawk now trying to, to work through some of that.
Right.
And the report was from Three Highway all the way to Hundred and Twentieth Street.
Right, right.
Okay?
And there's other areas that ride out around there as well, on the other streets.
Hopefully, they'll bear with us because it's gonna take a lot of, of work to get that problem resolved.
Correct. Um, some of their fiber optic ended up out in the road. They didn't stay the, uh, fifteen foot off of the center line or the five foot off of the edge of the road, whichever was greater. Um, they did submit a utility plan, um, but I don't believe it was signed off on by the commission. Um, I think they may have had a verbal to proceed, but I don't know that, that there was any signatures on it.
I don't, I don't know, I don't recall seeing it, that would've been JT, of course, but...
I...
So, uh, the other part of that, other part of that is, but there's probably no insurance clause on it at all.
Um, I don't know whether we can, I don't know if we can go back, I know we didn't get any of the bond paperwork. Um, anyhow, I have some emails on it from Crawcan. Um, I believe that they got a verbal from you back in the day. I, um, I don't know, I wasn't here. Anyhow, um, we do have an issue, and they are working with me, and they are visiting with me, and they are, um, wanting to go out and drive the areas, and maybe we can come to an agreement on some rock.
And we've done that, uh, Kansas Road was one of the examples.
Right.
Uh, that we, we, uh, that they'd driven and, that they do anything on Kansas Road?
Did, as far as work or as far as restoring?
Yes, as far as work.
I, I'd have to get their map, I don't have their actual map in front of me, I do have a map that I can go look at. But when they do complete, and they should be done here by the end of the month, I'm supposed to drive it with Matt Wells, who is the foreman for Bob Hole Incorporated, who is the contractor that's working out there. And we're gonna drive the area and see what we can, can come up with on an, uh...
Okay.
Some sort of a mutual agreement with everyone.
All right.
I don't doubt you saying I spoke with them, but all utility plans always came to commissions for review, so I don't know if I passed it on to someone else, I don't know.
I don't know, I, I can forward you the email if we want, it's from Bob Guilfoyle with Crawcan, it's however, um...
Right.
We just got to get to the...
Well, I know, I know it's created...
To a happy medium or...
It's created, it's created a lot of problems on a road.
Right.
Crawcan's real good to work with.
They are excellent, Bob Guilfoyle has been wonderful, um, to work with, so...
So, maybe we can get ahead of this thing.
Yes, because it, when it rains and we've had a lot of moisture here lately, it's, it's sloppy out there, I, I mean, it's just, uh, no other way about it, the spoils got pulled across.
And then the potholes are just...
The potholes.
Crazy.
So, anyhow, that's, yes.
They can take care of and put gravel and grade them.
Right.
Seems like.
And that's what, that's where we're at right now, so...
Okay, come in.
All right. Start off, several culvert permits that are completed. Clint Hazens, it is completed, ready for your signature. TNC Hot Club, it is completed, ready for your signature. Larry Shad is completed, ready for your signature. Deal's essential, so...
Been busy.
The men have been busy. And we are still working on the, the list. I think we're under eighty culvert replacements and crossroad tubes, so we're getting them knocked off the list one by one. Sixtieth and Grand, low water crossing, was opened up last Thursday, and, uh, everything's moving forward there. With that said, you asked last week on the bridge inspection reports that we have, um, here is the study report for the bridge that goes over the BNS F Row Road.
Yeah.
The first part, and then the back part is the report that they done.
Okay.
When they were here, and it was, it wasn't in depth, like I have seen from them.
Mm-hmm. That first report showed several options, doesn't it?
Yes, yes it does. So, I don't know if you wanna review over that and talk about it later, or, or what?
Of course, it's in Clifton area, but I just, I don't think we should talk about it too much later, it's probably time to make some decisions on that bridge, but...
Right.
That's up to Clifton.
So, I didn't know if you wanted to review all the reports there, or how you wanted to... I have had some conversations with the engineer, looking for grants and what have you, and he has sent me back some paperwork, so, uh, trying to see what's available out there. I know Lynn County has been successful on getting some grants for bridges. Um, I do have a meeting set up with Jackie Messer with Lynn County, um, May fifth, sit down, and he's gonna kinda show me some of the grants that they've received and, uh, what we can do to...
He's, say there's a five thousand dollars to get into the...
This is, that's another, another one I'll talk about here in, in a little bit.
Looks like a million dollars.
Million dollars on that, yeah.
Yep, that's kinda where we were at a year ago.
I mean, that's, of course, it's probably one point three or four now.
So, you know, you look at the, that, that great river crossing, nine hundred and sixty replacement, nine hundred and seventy.
My recommendation to you would be to give me a week or two here to kinda study what the engineers sent as far as grants and see if there is something we might be able to apply for, for this.
Sure. You wanna, would you like to have, call the clerk and then get that on the agenda?
Yep.
Couple of weeks, whatever, reach your time line.
Yep. If that's all right with everyone else, I know...
It is with me.
Mr. Beth, that's in your area, so if that works, or your district.
Well, and you mentioned you'd like to spend your FEMA money on a bridge, so this may be it.
It may be, I, you know, I...
It's been there a long time.
Right.
Yeah.
Maybe there's some grants.
Okay. On the other report that's in there, we are working on going through and correcting what we can correct on that other...
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, yeah, so...
So...
Okay. Crews are out patching potholes, um, just let you know on that. Um, we're out at the lake today, um, borrowed the, we went out a couple of weeks ago to haul brush from the sidearm mower. DEF system went out of the skid steer, so it's still in the shop, hope to get it back today. But anyhow, we're borrowing the city's mini excavator with the thumb, so we can try and get the brush loaded and, and hold and get it out of there, um, and, uh, get that taken care of. Also, um, gonna work with the city a little bit, or, not a little bit, we're gonna work together on the little spot there by the spillway, there's a very bad spot in the road. There needs to be some ditching done and a little bit of repair in a couple of areas. Does anyone know for sure who owns what part of the road? Is it all city, is it all county, do we know?
Two years ago, Chad showed me a document.
Okay.
That said the city promptly went up to the camping area, you can see where the asphalt changes right there.
Okay.
That, that came from the city of Fort Scott.
Okay.
Two years ago.
Two years ago?
Yeah.
Do you know what that document?
Chad had it in his possession, I don't know what it was or where he did it with it.
Okay, so I will talk with Chad on that.
Again, you can see right there with the asphalt start and stop changes.
You can see that?
Right at the gazebo.
That was always the destination, you know, the city county split, but...
Good to know.
And I was told they wanted to do that, and I could be wrong, but they, I told them that because they would have city police out there, they owned that road.
Okay.
And that camp spot, so I don't...
Okay, all right. Hey, that's good information. Also, I received a road complaint on that there, but in that, it said something about, I listened to the lake advisory board meeting, and it sounds like it's promised that the road would be resurfaced this year, do we know any thing on Hundred and Ninety-Fifth Street?
No, during your work session, we talked about maybe a chip and seal, maybe, but no overlay that I'm aware of.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, so that way, because we're getting ready to get fired up here asphalt in, in May, and, and I'm trying to plan everything out, and wanted to ask on that. Okay? Another grant opportunity, it's called, uh, Local Road Safety Plan. I kinda got, make copies for you on that. And you can read through, in order to apply for a high, high-risk, high-risk road grant, uh, you have to have the local, I get on the abbreviations, I get all the tongue tied, Local Road Safety Plan done. It's a fifty thousand dollar cost, but our share of it would be five thousand, and in return, we, it states in here, there's up to anywhere from three and a half, four and a half million dollars available, so we would, could be able to get...
This is, this is the grant we used out of Selbourn.
Okay.
Barbara Albright was driving that, and she got that grant.
Okay, um, but they show that we haven't had the Local Road Safety Plan done yet. We're one of the thirty-three, out of a hundred and five counties, we're one of the thirty-three that hasn't had the Local Road Safety. So, I'd like to sign up and get that Local Road Safety, so we'd be eligible for some of the other...
Good.
Try your motion.
Who, uh, who does the Local Road Safety Plan?
KDOT.
Okay.
They come in and do the study for us, yeah.
I'll make a motion to allow Eric, Public Works Director, to sign up at the, uh, High Risk Rural Road Committee or whatever.
It's the Local Road Safety Plan.
Safety Plan, okay.
Here a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Did have a meeting yesterday with CIC, um, in regard to our implementing computer software programming that we already have. Uh, they will be back here in a couple of months, or a couple of weeks, I should say, two or three weeks, to do some training on that, um, so we can get the soft, computer software up and going that we currently have.
So, uh, okay, uh, it'll look promising?
It, it, we didn't have much time yesterday to go through everything, but it does look promising, there's some areas that...
So, we have, when you get the, when you get the next training, I didn't get to go to the training yesterday.
Right, right.
So, uh, something else, so let me know.
Right. I will, I will find a date and let...
I'm really interested if it interfaces with our, our accounts payable and payroll.
Right, and I believe from what I understood yesterday that it will, but let's, I'll get the date and time and, and let everyone know.
Okay, thanks.
And, out, we'll kinda go to Jayhawk Wind area now. Um, bridge out on, uh, Sixtieth, between Arrowhead and Birch. It has been recommended by our engineer to, uh, put a speed limit sign a fifteen mile an hour over that bridge. So, my recommendation, or asking for a, a motion, my recommendation would be to go ahead and put that over while they're out in that area, so if we have big trucks. We did have an issue where the bridge decking in one area has come loose, um, so...
So, that's signs indicating a fifteen mile speed limit ahead?
Over the bridge.
So, you know, it takes two signs?
Two signs, one on each side, well, it may take four, so that way we can put the speed limit back up.
Is this, is this a bridge that might be replaced by those folks, or...
It's not, actually, they've changed their route to not use, okay.
Eric actually contacted me on this issue, and the reason that he's bringing this in front of the commission is it's a speed variance, and we've learned from prior dealings with speed variance, Jim's probably an expert on this on some levels, is that if you go for what the standard limit is on the gravel and you bring it down, you have to get commissioner approval. So, that's why he's bringing this up, I mean, he could just do it, but we thought we'd just come here first and get that done.
Right.
I think it's probably a good idea.
Yeah.
Personally.
I'll go ahead, I'll make the motion to allow Public Works Director to place a fifteen mile per hour sign on each side of the bridge on Sixtieth between Arrowhead and Birch.
Here a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
All right, and to give you an update where they're at, out there on capping the roads, they're ninety percent complete. They lack, uh, Hundred and Tenth from Highway Thirty-Nine North, three quarters of a mile, and Twentieth Road North from Highway Thirty-Nine past Eagle. Uh, right now, though we resume, KDOT, um, as we know, has shut down Thirty-Nine, uh, just west of the Seven Thirty-Nine Junction, and that bridge is completely out and gone. Also, they're doing the resurfacing on Three Highway from Thirty-Nine over to Fifty-four, restricted the, uh, width to eight foot. So, for safety reasons, KDOT has asked if they would hold off running trucks during that time. So, that's the reason that they went ahead and moved into Crawford County now and working on capping their roads while KDOT is finishing doing their, their part of, uh, the resurface on Three Highway. Um, also, on Eagle Road, they're gonna install just to the west of Twentieth, there's a low water crossing, they're gonna put a couple twenty-four inch culverts in there for, uh, at this time, so they can get across. And then, at the end, we'll need to decide whether we wanna leave them or, or not, but, um, anyhow, that's kinda, kinda where they're at. Um, again, they're about ninety percent complete with the capping of four to six inches of, of rock, and, uh, been very, very good to work with. Um, everyone with this project communicate very well, so. Any questions for me or anything?
I'm just gonna share the other commissioners, Eric and I had a conversation about his mowing plan, and, uh...
Yes.
Um, he's gonna have two full-time mowers plus a two sidearm mower, and he assured me he will have Todd Fox mowing some, and our weed man, Josh Lawrence, mowing some, so I think that's, I'm real happy with that, so thank you.
Yes, yes. Lynn, anything?
Got all your mowing tractors up, up and running now?
No.
I didn't think so.
Nope, so, it seems that, you know, constantly having some breakdowns, so. Um, also, a bridge truck, not sure, got a motor issue there, we're trying to get determined exactly what's going on with it, so, um, the blue tractor that we had on, uh, Purple Wave, um, got a report back from R and R that it, clutch fan, I believe is what he said. It's gonna be around three thousand dollars, and we'll have it back into the fleet, so, uh...
Three thousand dollars for a clutch fan?
Well, for all the work that they had to do.
Oh, okay.
Turnkey, three, four thousand, somewhere in there, so...
It's gotta be split and everything else.
Yeah.
Be a bargain, because it went from a, one dealer saying it was a cracked block to a clutch fan, so it...
Yeah.
I'm happy about that, so...
Yes, so...
Almost got, almost got Purple Wave, didn't it?
It did, it actually did get Purple Wave and sold, and then when the gentleman came to pick it up...
See, S and H told us they had cracked blocks.
He would've, he would've got a bargain.
I'm glad though.
Yeah.
He would've got a bargain.
Yeah, absolutely, so, um, anyhow, it's going back in our fleet, and, uh, as soon as we get it back, and, uh, we'll be mowing.
Great.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Beth, anything from you?
No.
Okay. And we are crushing, I, I forgot to say anything on that, but we are crushing, so...
Good deal.
Uh, Mr. Bailey and I met with some patrons yesterday afternoon for about an hour, hour and a half, about a bridge out on Thirty-Fifth and Yellowstone would probably be the best description, would that be correct, Mr. Bailey?
Yes, it's on Thirty-Fifth, just south.
Now, that's it, I know where it is, it's the, it's an old iron bridge.
Yes.
Very narrow, yes.
We started our...
Which floor?
We started our research on it yesterday, we had a good conversation with the patrons, they were very kind, and we understand what their situation is. We found out this morning that road is not, actually is open, and that bridge does belong to the county, so we'll have to do some steps to see what we wanna do, uh, maybe possibly talk to the landowners up in that, in that area to find out what, um, they need for that bridge. It, it's basically almost four, well, two and a half to four miles out of the way to get around to the north, if without that bridge, and then...
Right, this been closed for...
Two thousand twelve.
Does that go south to Dead End?
Is that the same one, or is it?
No, it's not Dead End, it just...
Okay.
It's Dead End now because of the...
Yeah, yeah.
No, it, it wasn't open road.
I don't know, did you look, see if it, if it, had it been, the bridge had officially been closed?
In, in the file, it says it was closed in twenty twelve, that's what the file says.
But there's no, there's no formal paperwork that it was closed, it just was closed.
Yeah.
That's the answer I was looking for.
Yep, so we got, we have, we have some homework to do.
Okay, very good.
We'll try to get it on it, you know, the next month or two, because it's a beautiful bridge, I mean, it is, and it's really big. I mean, it's a huge old eighteen eighty-nine iron...
In fact, I have a picture of it, or two. May share if I can find them.
Is there any cars in that area?
Um, you know, what, well, what the patrons were actually talking about yesterday is getting it to the point where it could handle ATVs and...
Oh, it could.
Side-by-sides, and then also foot traffic, and...
Well, I, I think, I think it is so narrow, you couldn't get any machinery across it.
No, no.
At all.
It's, it's horse and buggy, I mean, it, Model T wasn't even out when it was put in, so...
Neat bridge.
It is, beautiful.
Yeah, it's got, it looks like it's, you know, in fairly decent shape for its age, but it would take a small fortune to get it for, I think, for, for vehicles, it'd be a lot of money.
Well, it's an old wood plank bridge.
Yes.
See if I can come up with her.
Some of the oak planks are missing, but, you know, the price of oak right now, it might be more, it might be cheaper to use steel.
You know anybody that's got a sawmill, didn't you?
Baby.
Sorry.
We'll get, we'll get on it, we'll work on it. We might have, we might, I mean, there's gonna be only two options, either, in my opinion, and Eric can disagree with this, is either to fix it or shut Thirty-Fifth down from corner to corner. And have it revert back to the landowners, I don't think the landowners are really interested in that because of the, the beauty of the bridge and the need for it to be across that. I guess it's a mile wide or a mile section of that Osage River that is really wide and deep. And so, the low water crossings are literally a mile apart from each other, and they can't get stuff across in that northern part.
Would you be able to narrow it up to where only side-by-sides you can get through, or ATVs or foot traffic, or bicycles?
Yes, we'd have to do some modification, but it could be done.
Here it is. We actually could probably do some grants through, maybe the Department of Wildlife too, because of the area that it is, it's a really wide spot in the river, and it could be a fishing, fishing area. Yep, so, just some ideas.
Yeah, beautiful?
It is, and it's gonna, okay.
It's all about the dollar.
I can't tell you, I looked at the file, and in twenty twelve, it was right at seven hundred thousand, and that was the grant that was applied for, so...
That means a million too today, probably.
Absolutely, if not more.
Yeah, if not more.
That's a bridge. You know where it's at.
And, I had to say it, probably three cars a month.
Me too.
Three what?
Probably three cars a month.
Yeah, that's, absolutely.
Yeah.
So...
Investigate and can you get back to us?
We will, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else?
Nope, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. All right, uh, Gilmore Bell Disclosure Compliance Proposal, and this is for the bond refinance. Uh, says, please find a tatcher for your consideration, disclosure client service, compliance proposals. Now, thank it, from what I was told, um, in September of two thousand twenty was when our contract with, uh, uh... Ran out, so, uh, they're asking us to renew the contract. And, uh, and from what Susan has told me, is that it's a requirement for us to have this disclosure any time we make, uh, purchases as far as lease purchases or bond refinances and, and so forth.
It's called the In the System. And you're required by law to do a disclosure every year, and so Gilmore Bell is providing that service for you, so, because it's a lot of paperwork on that system. Um, anytime that you do any kind of lease purchase agreement... Anytime that you do any kind of lease purchase agreements, any new debt that you issue as a county, you should let Gilmore and Bell know that so that they can continue to disclose that because otherwise it could become a material issue.
So Kendall called me on the 4/21 or maybe a 4/20, we had to, to discuss this, and one of the things that, that Gilmore and Bell needed was a signature from Kendall to proceed and with the disclosure of the, the bond refinance. So she went ahead and signed it. I thought it'd be okay. So the other part of this, we need to have a motion to sign this contract with Gilmore and Bell, if I can find a cost on this. Did you know what the cost was, Susan?
It's usually pretty minimal.
It is minimal, it's trying to identify.
I want to say maybe $1,500.
Like, like I say, it was, it was something that we've done in the past that just expired September last year. So I'd make a, I'd entertain a motion to renew the contract with Gilmore and Bell PC.
I make a motion to renew the contract with Gilmore and Bell PC.
Go ahead, second.
I second that.
Any discussion? Also, that I would request to modify that to request me to sign it.
Make a motion to modify that. Last one, first.
Second.
Chairman O'Hair.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So, over the course of this pandemic, I've been questioned quite frequently on the, why we do the requirements, and the requirements were that we were following the governor's guidelines, we were following CDC recommendations. We were doing a very, I'd say diligent job of, of trying to protect our fellow citizens and protecting our employees and the public while they were in the courthouse. It all stemmed down to, one of the biggest items that we were discussing was the liability it created. Things changed. The, from what I've understand, and, and I guarantee you, I'm not a doctor, and I'm not going to make any medical advice here, but we've, we've been through the process of offering vaccinations against the coronavirus, and no one is basically stepping up to the plate or minimally stepping up to the plate to get their vaccinations. With us offering the vaccinations at the county and, and other medical professions or providers, the liability, our liability is now non-existent because it's available. People that don't want the, the, the vaccine don't have to get it, but, but the other side of that is, we do no longer have a liability that I can see, and I've also talked to the county councilor moving forward with a mask mandate. Go ahead.
Just had a heated discussion outside about this exact topic, so I'm going to try not to breathe too hard here, so. Interesting thought process. So right now, government is saying mask mandate, and the law of this is interesting because we don't know where it is. You know, foreseeability is extremely interesting with regards to the science, and the science is kind of all over the place in recent weeks with regards to the CDC, mask sanitizer distancing, just yesterday, six feet or 60 feet, I guess is the same thing based off of what I've read, and obviously I'm not a scientist. I've never pretended to be one. I'm not, I don't have any medical training. I'm just a small town lawyer who lives in Fort Scott, Kansas, and is concerned with people's safety and health, always have been, always will be. So obviously, I would suggest if the county is willing to lift the mask mandate, that it is lifted for the county only, for this facility only, not for other entities that are in the community. If the school, USC 234, 235 wants to keep their mask mandate, they have every right to do that. If a restaurant wants to keep their mask mandate, they have every right to do that. It's not telling another entity what to do because that's their own foreseeability and their own liability. I think that there's some pretty interesting science about the masks and how if you have your vaccine, you know, you don't have to really wear one, is what I'm reading. After two weeks, you can go mask free, and so people now have the choice to take the shot if they don't want it, they don't have to. They have that ability to live their lives because that's their choice. You know, we're not a communist or socialist country, and Jason could light me up, I guess it'd be the other this, but we're not being forced to take the shot, and so that foreseeability is now, I think, shifts to someone that makes that decision. If they don't want to take the shot, that's on them. You can't force an employee to take a shot. I don't think the employer has any right to do that. I don't think, the, the one thing that I think that the law says over this last year and a half is the quarantine part. I think the law is really clear that an employer can have an employee be quarantined when they're exposed and follow the guidelines of 14 days down to 10. On some levels, there's even some topics about seven days, so that was long enough for the quarantine, so outside of that, it goes with people's choice. And so if they decided not to take the shot and you want to get rid of the mask mandate and they get sick, I mean, right now, if you want a shot, you can get it. I mean, they've, they've shut down the shot center in Bourbon County zone.
Well, it is nationally a
Well, yeah, but they're, from this point forward, if you, I think after today, if you want a shot, you have to go to the health center, but they've got the shots.
Walgreens.
Right.
Walgreens Pfizer, by the way.
Right, so if, I mean, so for me, it's a, it's an, it's a, for me, it's a really interesting conundrum because it, you've opened up the door to, you know, free will, and free will to me is a very fascinating thing. You know, I used to, I'm an ex smoker.
Me too.
I chose to smoke, 10 years. I smoked cigarettes, and I know they were bad for me, but that was my choice. Now are they addictive and has the government got some conspiracy that makes me want to smoke? Well, I, I don't know, but I chose that route, and so you know, I had a conversation with the lawyer yesterday. I mean, some of this is just common sense, you know, like we've been living in this bizarre world the last year and a half, and we don't want to kill people. We're not, we don't want people to die, but we also have to come for, with the realization that if you don't want to take the shot and you don't want to wear a mask and you get sick, I mean, you can't, you can't litigate, I mean, you can litigate stupidity. I'm not saying that they're stupid for not wearing a mask or not. It's like a hot coffee being poured on your lap. I mean, there's some things you just can't get away from litigation wise, and you're going to get sued because you're going to get sued, but there's an issue of foreseeability and liability, and I think we're at the point now where if you don't want to take the shot, that was on you. You know, so I don't know, I don't, I don't have, I don't have the magic bullet, but I'm saying for the foreseeable part, it's, it's tough.
The other part of that, though, is even though that we, if we eliminate the mask mandate at the courthouse, the third floor will still be under the mask mandate because that's a, that's a directive from the Supreme Court.
Right. That, and that, and that's, we've talked about that. That's what's unique about our situation is the other two districts, other two counties within our district, they have separate courthouses. And so, and their, and their facilities, and I've been to one, their employees aren't wearing masks except for the courthouse. And so in Miami County, they have a separate courthouse from their administrative building, so if they want to make a non-mask mandate for the administration, I mean, we're kind of doing this for the courts now, but they'll have their own gatekeeper. And our gatekeeper's been awesome.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, she's been awesome, but I just, you know, it's up to you guys. I'm just, at this point, you're asking about liability. I can't.
I'd like to hear Clifton's opinion. He's our medical guy here.
Yep.
I mean, Justin's right. If you want the vaccine, you can get it. My personal opinion is if people are going to, the people that are going to wear a mask are going to wear one, the people that aren't, aren't. That attracted me yesterday, and I would say there was well less than 10% of the people wearing masks, and there was probably 500 plus people there, 1,000 maybe. And that was in southeast Kansas. So, but Justin's right, the liability's probably gone.
Yeah, I agree.
So I, I also think that if, I mean, I'm not going to, to vote on something that, you know, if a business wants to mandate masks, that's their choice.
Yeah.
It's also, and if they don't want to, that's their choice also. It's also my choice whether to go into that business or not, based on that, based on what they do, so. I, I would still recommend people, again, my personal opinion, not medical advice. I would recommend keeping your circle small still. There are hotspots in the country. Michigan right now is a mess.
I, I visited with Kendall, and she's in favor of wearing a mask. I visited with Patty. She prefers them, but okay the way, and I, Laura's here, so I shouldn't tell her what her opinion is.
I don't think that we need it. I mean, if you, if you've had, you have the ability to get the vaccine and our customers are far enough apart, we still keep separation in our vault, and I think that, you know, we can do without the mask. You don't want to go someplace. You choose to wear your mask, you wear your mask. Businesses can still, you know, have the mask mandate. If you need to go into that business, you wear a mask.
Yeah.
And that's basically where we've been for, for quite a while. We've only made it applicable to the courthouse in our, in our, and that's what we're going to do now. If we, if we so choose to eliminate the mask mandate, it will be strictly for nothing but the courthouse, excluding the third floor. They're under their own mandate. It's kind of like, like I've made many, many comments about going to some of the larger medical facilities. You will matter where I'm asking, you will, and they will not let you in unless you do. You know, and through the, this period, the last six months, I've noticed businesses trending away from the mask and providers, health providers.
They have that wear mask on the door, but half the people in this building doesn't have a mask, and they're not refusing the service.
The other part of this would be timing. We'd want to, if we do eliminate, we want to make sure that we give time, time enough for, to make arrangements for it to.
Well, I visit with department heads, of course, they're here every day, so their opinion was much greater than mine, being here a few hours a week, so I wanted to hear from them. I thought it was very important they had input and stuff.
Yeah, I talk to them also, and they say, most of them don't care except for, I know the clerk's office, and I, and they have reasons why they want to, to have them. Clerk's office, the appraisers, they don't really care.
And like Kendall's office, they've got the window there.
You bet.
They're not, you know, most of the people that come in, our office, you know, they're an arm length away, and a lot of people say they've been vaccinated because, you know, they're older, some of them are elderly, and they, they'll ask us, you don't have to mask up on our, my account if you don't want to because I've had the shot, but I'm wearing the mask. You know, I say you have to.
Yeah.
And, you know, we, we put our masks on and, because we don't wear the masks if nobody's in there, and they say, oh, we've already got our shots, but we still.
You know, Clifton made a comment that I wholeheartedly agree with, you know. So I, I would not want to be one that, that caused someone to lose their life. You know, I would not want to be in that position. The other, the other thing, the other arguments that, that I went through that, that kind of was taken aback with was people that passed because of COVID. Well, they had pre-existing conditions. You know, I've got pre-existing conditions. If I would have passed, I know my family would have been heartbroken and very upset because of, for me passing because of the COVID, and then have it blamed on pre-existing conditions. And we're, we're responsible for taking care of, of, you know, our neighbors, I would think, on that type of a liability.
And we clean our own office, and we take out our own trash, and our office is one of the only offices that's never had COVID. Good for you.
Okay. So I'd entertain a motion to, to eliminate the mask mandate for the courthouse only. And excluding, excluding the third floor.
I, I would say for the county building excluding the third floor.
All county.
I wouldn't call this a courthouse building.
All county buildings.
Well, I know the last, the last one we did, we just, we just made it for the courthouse.
Yeah, I'd say, I'd say that the, your road and bridge, you know, Ian, you know.
That's fine.
So does that mean that, mean, mean the rest of the county falls under the state guidelines, which ended on April 1st?
Yes, I would say that the state legislators on April 1, the, I mean, a private business can still, I think, we've talked about this before, mask mandates are hard to enforce. I don't think, you know, law enforcement is going to have a really time, time arresting someone for not wearing a mask, but the private business can say, you're trespassing on my property, you can't come in unless you have a mask. I mean.
Right.
And that's a personal choice.
Right, but the county commissioners.
I think the question's going to come up. So is the county in a mask mandate? So the answer would be no.
Well, the county mask mandate would be followed, my recommendation would be follow the legislators to protect you from liability issues.
Okay.
I don't know what those are anymore, but.
So I'd make a motion that excluding the third floor, Bourbon County buildings would not be under a mask mandate. The rest of the county would fall under state legislators' guidelines.
Go ahead, second. We'll make that determination here. Let's make that determination after we get this motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And that's a tough vote, people.
It is, it's a very tough vote. We've been messing with it for over a year. It's been tough all the way through.
Yeah.
As I say, we were, it's, it's been, it's been a pandemic. It has been not very kind to us.
And, you know, we've seen businesses and even departments in our organization that didn't wear masks, had a kind of a small outbreak of it, so it's still out there somewhere, so I'd be careful.
It was a, it was large enough. Anyway. Motion carries. Okay, timing.
The county, so my opinion, the statewide went into effect on the, based off the legislators on the first. As far as our local.
I think we've done a great job of trying to maneuver our way through this process.
Yeah. I did talk to, I did talk to our health department yesterday. She mentioned that the governor didn't have a mandate. The legislature overruled her mandate or something like that, so state of Kansas is not under one, so, for our health departments.
Right.
So, timing.
Today.
Okay, so.
Doesn't matter.
This minute.
Make a motion.
I'll make that motion. This non-mask goes into effect immediately.
Go ahead, second. Any discussion? Here it comes.
Sorry, there, we do have one identifiable employee that I think we should go into executive session for to discuss. Just because I think that employee could be a benefit to our organization and might be able to find. I have a couple of other things that have happened in the last couple of weeks that that person could maybe come in and fill in briefly for us on another issue that we need an employee on. So I'd ask that we go into exec, first you have to ask them into the agenda based off of what just happened with the Commission for Non-Elected Identifiable Individual to protect their privacy rights, and that would be, the subject matter would be that person's performance and possible reemployment within the organization.
So we can get this done and then go into executive session.
I'd ask for probably seven to 10 minutes to discuss that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Take a breath.
I'd make a motion to amend the agenda to add an executive session under KSA 75-4319B1 to discuss personal matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy.
Go ahead, second.
Second.
Well, we're not there yet.
Not there yet. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, now I make a motion that we would go into executive session under KSA 75-4319B1 to discuss personal matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy for seven minutes. So we would return here at 9:55, leave this room, and subject matter will be.
Performance, job performance.
Performance, job performance and possible unemployment opportunity for that individual. Uh, would be myself, the other two commissioners, and county councilor Meeks.
Go here a second.
Second.
Let's go.
Any discussion? All in favor? See if I can get this thing I can do this thing.
Yeah, initially, the city, the city wanted Red Cross's help, but they wanted, the city wanted to be the ones to say where, where they're having these people. Not a good idea, but that's what they wanted to do. They put them in like halfway, big halfway house apartment complex. There was. Uh, one, yeah. Amazingly, just the one. But uh, they put them in like a halfway house apartment that the city had rented or owned for a long time and they're like, that's complete capacity, Red Cross goes in there like, we can't have people here. So then they opened it to like sixty different hotels around the city. And some of those hotels were like very kind.
That's so cool.
Like one of them here.
It was hard, yeah.
So what was your job?
Um, well, yeah, but see, uh, they, uh, happened like, um, like about ten days before I got here and I was the first tech nurse that was on there, on site to go ahead and check on people. They've done virtual care, like what I did with Minneapolis, but, but they, you don't see people, we don't know. So this guy who showed up at his age, he was like four weeks. And we had to process it.
Yeah, yeah.
And I had no, gone to look for it or anything, so.
So, so your, your job was still more medical than?
It was nursing, yeah, mhm.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, but you could go all the hotels and like every, everybody's getting, everybody's mad and it's like, all right.
Everybody happened.
Just talking about trying to keep people in their ass.
Sure, yeah, so something like that happens.
And a lot of the disabled, you know, a lot of disabled, you know, health issues, they feel skilled, you know.
Uh, yes.
I wasn't, I wasn't here, I, I moved here.
It's still good.
It's a must.
Red Cross has been quite good and, you know, making sure that, you know, things are being said.
It really kind of is.
Seems like her, I was telling her about a year ago, January is when.
We're not, we're not Gen Z once work.
No, it was more.
Nope, actually it was January. January is when, um, our here. Actually, we always came to him and said, we have a pandemic coming, we have a pandemic. He started that in January, he didn't have that. Everyone I've talked to across the nation are saying, you guys are very good. Yeah, January, nobody believed him, right? Yeah. And we started meetings right away. It was January. So that was way ahead of the day. Getting the L A P C together and, yeah, talking about how the law enforcement is gonna do it, how we're all gonna respond to this. Yes, that's it. So everyone's asking, how did he know?
Well, it, it, it always, you know, that, that, and, and things were actually in preparation.
Yes.
What's your son doing off right now? Nothing, of course. So you don't, you don't do track?
Yeah.
In the middle of.
Yes.
Smart kid.
So, we, that's one reason why.
Have you seen many derbies?
It's so well.
We haven't.
It's in the title more than.
Yes, yes. I'm just grateful, cause there are a lot of counties, cities that didn't. They didn't need one. Maybe because they didn't have a certain.
You just can't go out like.
A few years ago, it all over, you couldn't get rid of. Boys went out yesterday morning, they had ten young chicks come in.
So now I gotta talk, talk to Will about our, our high rise elderly place.
And had four older ones. They could see him, a hundred yards behind him, but they had hands with her, they wasn't moving.
Oh, yeah.
We hunted high bill.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, we come there, there's a timber, and I'll open field, and the guy will go over field and put up deer, feeders out there.
They didn't have a health situation.
They never got us anymore. We might put us some feeders if we want.
And he even threw out five or six bags of junk food.
Yeah.
It's interesting. Yeah. And then the, the states that are really locked down, like Michigan, Pennsylvania, they're still struggling. I mean, there's a problem with that. So.
The little, I finally started letting.
I think we did pretty good here.
I, I've assumed.
Everybody needs to still be careful and wise.
Robbies.
Yeah, we got a couple of laughs.
So we fish out big calls late, and we catch one last night, everyone's on property, I said they're there, but we can't find them, so.
Are they lifting it? Yeah. Okay. Well, I think they should, that was not, that's six or seven out of six million, six point. Something to investigate though, but I think it.
We didn't watch on the avenue, we saw that, we had a big growling on that boat, we didn't think it'd show up.
Yeah, no issues, so.
All right.
She's, you know, she's gonna be upset, but she's in that age range.
Done. Thank you. Good job, guys.
From the very beginning, you've done well.
I hope, we'll find out.
Yeah, still don't come to work sick.
Yeah, that's just.
Don't come to work if you're sick.
You know, that's a whole.
So that's something our, our employers need to really rethink that and. Yeah.
Amen.
You only got so many of those days.
And sadly, I'll tell you that I want my employees to show up, even if they're sick, we gotta work.
Yeah.
That's the economics problem we have with today's world.
But I guess if they, they can wear a mask at work, can't they?
That's right.
They can wash their hands, you can have all that stuff accessible, but it's best if they really aren't at work. You know? Geez. They could get, maybe get, improve their health quicker if they stayed at home and rested. Right? Yeah, that's true. I know, being a nurse, I, there's times I, I went to work when I was like, had sinus, you know, problems and. Or when I was teaching and I still went to work and. And, um, at least lecturing and having a sore throat and like, oh crap, you know. I was away from them, but still I went. I think we're more aware of it now for sure, also.
Is there a, just general, a better diligence in clinics?
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
I think that's something that is probably gonna change. Kids washing their hands. I've noticed in the preschools, the kids are just, they're.
They're like doing a good damn.
Uh huh. Caleb and.
Yeah, those little girls. He's so cute.
I know. That's good.
He just got us a dozen.
Yeah, so we gotta supervise that.
At the same time.
So I do have a question, I mean, you, you obviously. Is the vaccine effective? I already got the answer, I wanna not rely on.
Yes, what vaccine? Absolutely, absolutely.
Let me stop you and tell you that I do not think that you should take any nursing advice from the Bourbon County. Well, he. Categorization for the state, state.
Oh, okay.
As a nurse, I nearly discussed it without us going, because statistically, we rely too. So then we based all this, this situation based off of the statistics.
But it's definitely.
All right, we're down to elected officials comments.
Yeah, I think. We don't have the turtle phone working.
What's that?
The turtle phone, I don't know if Bill wanted to.
Uh, it's not even turned on, not plugged in.
Give me a call.
County councillor, you got anything today?
I mean, a call, Bill, to see if he has any.
This thing's dead, it's not even on network.
Hey, you wanna, uh, make a comment? No, I don't know, yeah, I don't know what the deal's going on there, anybody looking to that, um, I'm gonna put you on speaker. Okay, hang up. Okay, I got Sheriff Martin on speaker. You're on.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Chairman O'Hara and Commissioner Harris, can you hear me?
Turn it up a little bit.
That's as loud as I can get it on my phone.
Can you hear?
Hey, last week I came to, uh, I took attention to regards to, uh, a couple of vehicles, or several vehicles possibly being used for investigations. Uh, we shot the K C A.
Call failed.
Maybe we do that phone.
They're, they're dead.
No, they're dead.
They're not on networks, they don't go call forward anymore. So he's, he's basically, he's basically, he needs to.
Maybe he could come up and see us.
Just have him, have him tell, have that go through, through Kendall's office, tell us what the insurance costs are. That's all we need.
Yeah.
I'll just come out next week.
Okay, I'll holler at you. Well, I think what he was, well, I'm not gonna speak for him, but he had talked about it last week, couple of calls.
Has, he has three vehicles from, from forfeiture. That, that he wants to put into his fleet. I'd ask for how much it, the insurance cost. Uh, so if he gives him the Kindle, then we're good to go.
Yeah.
Okay. County councillor.
I've got, uh, two things, um, Mr. Coon is here in the room, he's part of, um, one of the topics I wanna talk about, but. The first one is the, um, tax sale, just gonna give you an update. We're, um, I talked to Patty yesterday, we're gonna wait two more weeks to kinda see where our numbers are from the abstract company. They're working very diligently, and we've talked about before how busy they are, which is a good thing, not a bad thing. We've got around a hundred, I, I don't, I don't wanna have four sales, cause there's around four hundred parcels, but if we get a hundred and fifty, you know, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five, we might move forward and have two sales, and then. The second sale we'd have, you know, November, uh, of this year, or maybe even December. We're hoping for June, but because of the, um, on fire housing market, and that's one of the reasons why Mr. Coon's here, is. Um, delaying the abstracts, which makes sense, I'd rather have a person who's bought a home in our city or county. To be first in line instead of for the tax sale, so, um, we're not. Wanting to put any pressure on the abstract company at all, but we, we understand that they're busy and that's what's one of the reasons why we're. Not going as fast as we want, but that's life, it happens. There are people that are, uh, redeeming, which is good, so the people are paying. Uh, their taxes, we're, our collection rate is really, really good again, I think we're gonna be easily over three hundred thousand on pre-sale, which is a big deal. Um, so hopefully we keep up with the trend and keep collecting back taxes, so. With that, the second part is, uh, Mr. Coon contacted me probably a month ago, a month and a half ago. Uh, on a lot that is, um, on Wall Street, uh, if you're heading, um, east. It's on the right-hand side of the, or the south side of the road, it's a vacant lot between two pretty nice houses. Um, he's wanting to start building, um, spec homes, they're, you know, smaller, you know, square footage wise, but. They're gonna be perfect for our, our demographic and our community. Um, he has had that there was a special on that property. With the city, and the city, uh, I think did the right thing and waived that special, it was a tear down fee, it was around seven thousand dollars, maybe eight. Yeah, so those, those got waived, and so he's paid the back taxes on that property, and he is gonna obviously. Use the client's office with the N R P, but, you know, if there's some taxes in the future, we probably wanna start thinking about. Waiving taxes at the county level, you know, the, you, the Fort Scott Community College, U S Ds are gonna have to be approached at some level too by. These types of, um, builders, and we know we need, we have a housing shortage. So it's something we're gonna need to start thinking about and talking about to maybe help spur residential. And even commercial at some levels, if there's a building downtown or, you know, a commercial building out in the county that could be rehabbed, we wanna, and there's back taxes on it, we might wanna have that thought, so. That's why Mr. Coon's here.
Well, you and I, you and I have had this discussion many times over the years, on how do we get these properties back on the tax rolls?
Mm-hmm.
And one way to do it is, is to, uh, forgive the back taxes, if you have someone new that wants to develop the property.
Right, well, there's, there's, this is a, actually kind of a lengthy conversation, I don't, I don't know, we wanna talk about it today in, in, at length, but. There's a difference between the tax sale and an individual who buys a property with the idea of developing it.
Yes.
So in his case, he bought a lot that was vacant, that had a special on it and back taxes owed, did. Well, I'm just going to.
But I mean, similar scenario.
Right.
That could happen, but.
Right.
I've actually owned this for a lot of years, and a lot of bad city management left a bad taste in my mouth, and I said, hey, there you go. There's a lot of new energy in the city right now, as there is in the county, and I like that, and so my wife and I decided to invest a little bit. Um, but we still have some incentives, I mean, it just. Goes back to kind of our demographic area, what's going on here, there are other places I might bait, try to build. Here it'd be nice to have some incentives in the county and the city cheering you on, saying, hey, what can we do for you? Um, the city has given me a waiver, it's a seventy-two hundred dollar waiver. Um, on a piece of property that belonged to me in the first place. I paid up the back taxes in exchange, we're gonna build a new spec home there. I would like to build four more homes in twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two. Um, in different locations, some I might, I would like the city or the county to get involved in coining me. Or, um, even the tax incentive there is, I think there's a five-year tax payment on new construction.
It's a tax, tax refund.
Can you actually hear this?
Um, you might wanna, you wanna take this one.
Yeah, it's a, it's a tax refund, we don't, we don't get to use the word abatement.
Yeah, oh yeah, and that, that probably isn't turned right, but for me as an investor, this is just about, um. The, the incentive for that.
You bet.
And so. You know, right now, building costs are really, really high, but so have, so is the cost of just rehabbing some of these homes. When the city's tearing down these houses, there are a few years spread that we just tore down houses and tore down houses. And, and maybe they needed to come down, but on the other hand, now we have something that has no taxable value, nobody wants to pay to deal with it. And it just goes undelved with, and we're, and the county's, I think on some level, losing some revenue there. So we can get some incentives to where an investor, any investor, wants to come in and, uh, whether it's ones from the tax sale. Or for any other pieces around, that there can be some sort of tax incentive, rebating, whatever, to new construction. This piece of property I actually own is one of the first pieces of property I bought when I moved here. Um, maybe even a business mistake on my part years ago, we learn as we go, right? I, I think it got handled very, very wrongly at a time when the city was trying to do what they could to clean up Wall Street. And so I said, okay, you can have it. Show on with it. Um, in this case, we have decided to, to do some new construction, we're gonna do something with it, we got in touch with the city. They agreed to give the waiver, I've already paid all the back taxes, there's, everything is, is paid on, on all the other real estate I own as well, currently in the county. So hopefully we do some more development, some more construction this year.
Good.
Um, but, we still actually, I, I got the mailer regarding these funds, so I guess I just, that's one of the reasons that I'm up here, is to know that. Once that we see the waivers been filed, some will round can.
Well, I think what, the, this is a, in my, in my opinion, um, N S County Councillor, I think a couple of things have been brought up with this conversation, one is. You know, the N R P's been in place, you know, it, it will need to be renewed at some point, but it's still active, and that is a good incentive for someone that wants to build. A residential property outside of the city limits of Fort Scott, cause they have their own N R P program. It's different than ours, I mean, it's mirrors, they're mirrored, but they're handled differently. Um, and so maybe at some point, you know, five or six, ten someday, they'll consolidate and have one countywide N R P program, and that's why. Um, we went to the Redfield and Union Town and different places to have it, so that it's, it's uniformed, and there's nothing wrong with the way it's set up now, it just might be more streamlined down the road. The second part is an incentive for economic development that. Happens for a builder that wants to do residential development like Mr. Coon is talking about, and to me, that's where you guys have moved towards the Bedco model, where. You have an economic, um, source to go to, to say, hey, look, I wanna build five spec homes in a certain area. Um, you know, obviously the city of Fort Scott currently has their own Economic Development Director, um, that person would be able to. Uh, have that conversation with somebody that's building within the city limits of Fort Scott, but maybe. Bedco or whatever they're gonna be in the future could tie in with that and, and help someone that wants to do multiple spec homes within the community, which we desperately need.
Okay, desperately.
The other, the other thing that we're, that we're lacking, and it's nothing against anyone, it's just a part of having that person in place, is. Tying in with the U S D A loan, tying in with, you know, all those different incentives that happen in rural development grants, things like that, that. Could benefit someone to build in the city or in the county on residential properties, and I think. Those types of assistances are not in place right now at the county level, we're, we're moving really close to being there, I think within the next. Thirty to forty-five business days, we're gonna have that process set up to where someone like Mr. Coon could come to that person and say. Hey, here's my idea, here's what I wanna do, and the county can give benefits through. Parcels, through waivers, like the N R P program, or if there's back taxes owed. There's two, two separate trains of thought there too, one, the tax sale is really different than back taxes that are owed on a property. So a special is different than a, a property that sells in the tax sale, cause once that property sells in the tax sale, it, all the taxes are wiped out, there's nothing owed.
Well, I know there's grants being.
But there, but there's an issue, as we know, with the title company and title insurance, and getting a loan on that parcel if it's not, and that's what the land bank was for, so. What Mr. Coon's talking about too, is the land bank being a big part of this, so that when. A developer comes in and there's seven or eight lots that are owned by the land bank, that that person can come in and have that incentive of getting those lots for free, or for next to nothing, or. For X amount of dollars, and not having any back taxes and having clear title.
Correct.
Cause in my world, it's all about clear title, I mean, Mr. Coon's not gonna put a hundred and twenty, or a hundred and eighty, or eighty thousand dollar house on a lot that he can't get a loan on, or get clear title to when he wants to sell it, and so. We've had that problem in the past, and it's been. We're now on a four, really almost a four-year delay to, to solve a really big problem with title insurance. And it's nothing against title companies, that's, that's the reality, and we're just trying to fix that problem, and hopefully. With the land bank and with some things that we're moving forward with this sale. We can maybe help fix that problem, but most people need to know that once they buy a tax foreclosed parcel within our community, they're gonna have to clear the title. And that's not a, sometimes that's not an easy process, or, nor is it affordable. You know, eighteen hundred to twenty-five hundred dollars is gonna probably be pretty common to. Publish and go in front of the courts and clear the title up, so there's. Multifaceted, and I'm really glad that Mr. Coon is gonna be doing this, this is a big deal, this is what we've been talking about for almost eight years now, so. We wanna help as best we can, but the, the legal parts of this is multifaceted, because he's talking about. Four or five different things within one project that could be a benefit to him, but also help. We have to, we have to do things on our end to get him to the help that he needs, and we're not there yet.
Some of that, some of that help you're speaking of also goes to this housing grants, there are, there are a lot of housing grants to be had. Currently, the city's controlling, is controlling, they're receiving the only grant that I know of, and I'm actually trying to chase that grant for this year. Mikey Rogers has got it in years past. One of the reasons why I want to build as fast as I can at seventeen oh eight, which is a property that was previously being discussed. Is to use as a model for the grant. Hey, in other words, hey, Coon Rentals has done this, this is the, the brass tack stamp of what it costs to do this. We can do it, cause we've already done one, and try to chase that grant. But probably with some more structuring at the county level, you all could be receiving some of those grants that might, would apply in more better, or, in a wider area. Union Town, Redfield, I don't know that they have the ability to have that now.
And that's, and that's what you guys did with Bedco.
So one, one of the, one of the things, the resources we have, and we probably, I can check with them, is the Southeast Kansas Regional Planning Committee. Uh, they're into the grant, pro, granting process, so I can call them and ask them if they can be involved in it, we. We do not, one of those types of grants, with the county being a part of the Southeast Kansas Regional Planning Committee, we do not have an application fee. So, so we can go down that path and, and check out what the grants would be.
I think on a, I think on a temporary basis, you know, absolutely, but on a long term, you know, what it looks like eight months from now, is that. You guys have voted last week, I mean, you voted before that, I mean, Bedco is gonna become a big part of our future. With residential, commercial, real estate, I mean, we got a lot to do.
And we, and, and I know that that organization right now is pursuing grants.
Yes, I'm just, I mean, you're gonna have the function in place, but it's, it's gonna take a little bit longer.
What about the land bank thing, do we know any?
Oh, the land bank, the land bank is absolutely moving forward, they have their board, they've had meetings, they're, you know, the specials, um, you know, just to talk about specials, cause I got a call from the city of Bronson about this too, I mean, a special is lawn mowing services on a vacant lot. Or a tear down on a vacant lot, so. If, if they tear down a house and it gets attached, what they do is they attach that to the mortgage or a special on the property, so when Patty. Or myself, or Laura Holdridge, or anybody sees that parcel, they see, uh, that special, and so in the past. The cities have waived those specials, but in this case, it's tax dollars, so the land bank. They, I mean, really, the, the parcel got, it was more expensive to tear the house down than what the actual parcel's probably worth. And so they wanna reach, to get a return on their investment, so the land bank will be part of that, where if the special isn't waived, and no one wants to pay seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars for that lot. Then it goes into the land bank, and the tax taters have already torn down the house anyway, and so. The land bank then would make the decision with the developer to come in and say, okay, you're gonna build a twelve hundred square foot house, it's gonna have a garage, it's gonna have concrete driveway, it's gonna have sidewalk. And they get that lot for free, and then they get the N R P, and then they get the rural development grant, and now it starts making sense, cause right now. It's a hundred and seventy to a hundred and eighty-five dollars a square foot, which has literally doubled in the last two years, I mean, it's. The cost of construction's gone through the roof, I mean.
Like, he's like, uh, someone, uh.
I don't see it going down anytime soon.
Little bird, somebody put on one of them social medias was, that, uh, they wanted to build a birdhouse, but the bank wouldn't float the loan.
There's some, those were, I, the bakes, yes, bakes, lovely, gotta love them. Yeah, so, a couple of comments I was gonna make there, but I refrained, did you see that, Chairman, I refrained from a couple of comments. That's a good one, no, but I think, I think, you know, the data, the, um, census data is starting to come down, I don't know if anyone noticed yesterday, but the state of Texas picked up a couple. House seats, Ohio lost one, Florida gained one, I mean, and so the data that we're seeing for rural America is, um, on some levels not positive, I mean. Uh, Greg Molly had a wonderful, um, article in the Fort Scott Tribune on Saturday, it was a good editorial piece, um. Talking about what's happening in rural America, and the lack of housing is. We're, we're, I mean, desperate is a word, I mean, we have something that a lot of communities don't have, we have high-speed fiber. We're close proximity to a lot of really interesting metro places, we have a, soon to be a four-lane highway that's gonna connect most of our region, um, right, running right through our backyard, so we have. Literally superstructure with transportation and superstructure with technology, and this could be a really good place to live, and I think their housing market is showing that, that. People are moving here from out of state, from out of region, because we have the things that they need to live in our new economy, and without housing. We're not gonna have that new economy, because there's no place to live, and. Our houses here are awesome, but our existing inventory is extremely low, I, the last time I talked to a realtor was probably a month ago, and. In some cases, they don't have two weeks, two weeks worth of inventory right now, and that hundred and eighty to two hundred thousand dollar house, under the old economy. Is non-existent, they can't find four-bedroom, two-bath, four-bedroom, three-bath homes, they're just not on the market, and so.
I know, I know that's nationwide too, because my brother bought a duplex down in Arizona. Snowbird.
Right.
And, uh, when he bought it a couple of years ago, there was a thousand, or a thousand properties on, on for sale.
Right.
It's down to fifty.
What, what's, what's unique though, I think what's interesting about our situation is, is that we're not a major metropolitan area, we're a rural, you know, we're a spot on the map. You know, we're, we're, we're a place in Southeast Kansas, and I know that Pittsburgh and other communities are experiencing this, but I think the influx, I think the realtors would tell you that. There is some inventory being bought up by people that are from here, but there's a lot of inventory that's being bought up by people that aren't from here, and to me, that's what's unique. That's the interesting part of the analysis that we've done over the last six or seven years to show, you know, one, why are those people moving here, I mean, obviously it's cost of living. Fiber, location, quality of life, schools, you know, things like that, but we should feed off that and try to build on that more, but the problem is, we don't have the inventory now to support. Someone moving here, all the houses that are, uh, available are sold, we're on contract, they've had offers made on them. You know, a house that was worth sixty thousand dollars three years. You know, a house that was worth $60,000 three years ago is now selling for 80. I mean, it's just a difference of, and it might stop, but right now, we're, even if it stops and slows down, we're in a unique situation where we need, we need more inventory.
Please don't say this to Ken Anderson.
Yeah, look out.
Well, I, you know, I understand people's opinions.
Good for the economy. Things are going good.
It's good, but, you know, and the interest rates are really low. We've taken on a lot of debt. I mean, we can't deny that at the federal level, there's a lot of debt being taken on, and the interest rates are, could go up. But what I'm saying is, is outside of all that, and outside of anybody's opinion, the reality is, is that we have a housing shortage.
Have had for a long time, because we have, we have people that are, that drive in from different locations that work in our.
And let's say, let's say they don't even want to live here, they just want to commute. We still have a housing shortage.
But I'm just saying, that may help the situation. We had more housing.
I think, I think another, you know, and here's someone that's willing to take the risk. If he builds a home and doesn't sell, unfortunately, that's on him as the builder. But I think he knows that there's a good chance that a house is going to sell, and that's why he's building it.
That's what we need from us.
And we should help as much as we can.
What else does he need from us? We have the NRP.
Yeah, we're going to, hopefully with Bedco, within the next 10 business days, we can help steer him to that direction with the granting process.
We'll start, I'll start that conversation outside of.
Because, no offense to this commission, just knowing what I know now, you guys don't have the time to be Economic Development Directors.
Yes.
No offense, because no one else, we don't have time.
Thank you very much.
You're already doing HR, and he's doing ball fields, and he's got medical stuff going on.
Was that putting first on your list? Will speak? Very good. Thank you all.
Hey.
Thank you.
Okay. Other comments?
Susan.
Susan, Susan, I'm sorry. I stole Susan's thunder.
Stole one of them. That's all right.
Sorry, Susan.
Second one. The first one was the Gilmore and Bell. We've already taken care of that. So the second one is, last, I think the last meeting, we talked about going out for bid on property and casualty, work comp, as well as health insurance benefits. If we're looking to do that, I would highly recommend that we look at a, there's, there's different ways that you can do this. You can do it through a broker, a consultant, or an advisor. It really needs to be somebody that's nonbiased, that helps you through this process. Or we can try and do it ourselves. The problem is, is when you try to compare apples to apples, you don't always get that when you're doing these types of bids. So I'm recommending that you go out to look for an advisor to kind of help you through this process. And the other thing is, is what are you looking for from this person? Do you just want them to go out and look at the market and see what's available? Do you want them to actually build a relationship with you that looks at different things like FLSA, FMLA? You know, they can give you guidance in a lot of those practices. There's, there's just a wide variety of ways you can look at this. It's, it could be for, you know, employee retention.
One of the things that, you know, continually comes up in the conversations is that the county has very good benefits. And I would think that if we're going to put this out to bid, one of the criteria is apples to apples.
Okay.
Unless they can offer us more for less, which, you know, is probably not going to happen, not any time that I've seen in the recent memory. So you think a consultant?
Yeah.
I, so I've got a problem with that.
Okay.
I mean, how's that consultant? First off, if it's a broker, consultant, advisor, whatever you want to call it, it's actually the same person. They are going, unless there's a consultant, you pay, that's not going to make a commission off of the sale. Because otherwise, if I hire, if I go get a broker or an advisor, I can promise you, they're going to, I mean, I sold insurance. It's not fair, in my opinion, to go over here to XYZ Company and say, you're going to be our consultant. Well, all they're going to do is farm it out to four or five different companies. And they're the ones that's going to get the commission on it. How is that fair to John Doe Agency down the road? Why are they not getting to bid the project?
I know. There are companies out there that do not, you pay them directly. They have no dog in the fight. The one that I can think of, we actually used one at the city, James Charlesworth. And he, he was not bidding on any projects, he didn't provide insurance, he was truly just an advisor on, on going out and shopping the market for you. And then he does the analysis of whether or not they're providing apples to apples.
And this is different from what we've been advertising in the newspaper. That's for our health care.
We haven't advertised anything, I don't think, have we? Did we advertise something?
Yeah, we've been advertising, taking some information by September on our healthcare benefits. I saw the newspaper.
Okay.
Right. But then again, we need to figure out, from our perspective, when we get these bids, apples to apples. You know, we don't have a clue.
I just saw in the paper.
Okay.
September, I'm saying the 20th or something was the deadline to have proposals for us on our healthcare.
And that's just on health, healthcare?
I believe healthcare.
Okay, so do you want property and casualty? Because there are three separate things. You've got property and casualty, you've got work comp, and then you've got healthcare.
They've got it all this. You weren't here when that happened, I don't think.
So do you, do you, are you guys going to look at that? How do you want it put together? I mean, it's, it's a lot more.
I'm not an expert in that field at all.
Yeah, I don't think any of us are.
Well, I think.
I just pay my dues.
I think we can sit down and look at proposals, though.
But here's, here's the thing, is we can look at the proposals, but we don't know when we get into it, when you get into these things, what they actually cover. What is the deductibles? What is this? What is that? You know, they have to look at your historical data on rate increases. You're getting an introductory rate, and then in two years, you start seeing this massive increase. We need to go through every one of those.
Well, nobody's going to be able to do that. I mean, I don't care if he says he's a consultant, he's not going to have any idea about the rate increase two years from now.
You've been here six years, how'd you used to do it?
Out of my debt? You know, I've had, I've had opportunities to get other insurance and have, and I guess what, rate creep hits me every time.
Yeah. I mean, far as, how did the commission review the past?
Well, they're going to try and buy your business. Anybody knew they were trying to buy your business. That's just the way it is.
How did you review it in the past?
The commission, yeah. Didn't review it, just told it went on.
We've been with this carrier for quite a while.
K Camp, K Works.
K Camp, K Works, we've been, we've been, we're using them for, for a number of years.
I guess I just need direction from the commission on what part you want me to play in this.
So anybody, here's the deal, in my opinion, when we voted on this back in November, I mean, anybody can go and get the paperwork from Kendall on what we have and can bid the, I mean, that's Justin. That's, anybody can go and get that. That's Core, Discoverable, and all of that, or whatever.
Absolutely, yeah.
So, you know, now, the problem is, that person can say whatever they want, but I mean, the policy can be read. My opinion is, whoever wants that information can go get it from Kendall and bid it. I would be okay with paying a consultant to look at it after those people bid it. I don't want the consultant going out and getting the bids.
Okay.
Because I, because he is going to have friends that he is going to only let bid that project.
And we probably ought to review what Kendall's already done.
Yeah, probably so.
Really, that's, he hit the nail on the head, and I kind of was probably getting the cart before the horse on that. Was that, was my thought, was they put in the bids, the consultant goes through and compares them for apples to apples. They're not in the process of going out and, and actually looking for companies to give. No, that'd be up to the companies to do that. We have a consultant to go in and compare them and make sure that we're getting what we are, think we're getting.
I just don't think it would be fair just hiring a consultant to go get the bids, because.
No, I agree.
I do, too.
He's going to have buddies that he's going to send that to.
So that'd be the direction.
Okay. So do you want me to do, so it sounds like we've got health insurance coming in in September, is that what you said?
Actually, I think I saw in the newspaper.
Okay. And then, Doretta, do you know, have we done work comp and, and property and casualty?
I know that last year, there was a company in town that, that was putting together a bid on our property and casualty, and I don't know if work comp was in that.
Okay.
I don't think work comp was in that.
They really need, yeah, they really need to be three separate things because of how they're structured right now.
I don't know if they were bidding both or just one, I don't know.
And you've been through this process, so.
Yeah, a few times. Yeah. So, let me think.
I'm going to, I'm going to, just so everybody's clear on my opinion, and if anybody's watching, whoever, in my opinion, whoever wants to bid it, they can ask for that information, and they can bid, in my opinion, anything that we have available to bid can be bid out.
It can. And when we made our.
Doesn't mean we have to accept it.
When we made our vote to do this, we included everything.
Yeah.
Do you guys have a formal process that you go through?
We look at the bids.
That's just it. Okay. There is a time, date, stamp thing?
And we have the presentations.
Okay.
That's up to, that's up to, we don't, I don't, I mean, in my opinion, it's not my job to be the insurance company to find out when our due date is.
No.
It's not my job to tell them that it's September 1st. If they want to bid it, go get it.
No, I think for my benefit, when, when are the bids coming in?
Ken knows.
Okay. Okay. All right. I'll just wait for direction.
They'd have to come in two months before the September or something.
Yeah, the drop dead date is September on, on part of it, so I don't know what to, go ahead with Kendall on that.
Okay.
And I agree with getting a consultant after we get the bids, to tell us what we're looking at, make sure we're looking.
Susan, it's kind of like, I mean, I look at it this way. If, if somebody wants to bid my house insurance, how about it? I don't care. Doesn't mean I have to take it. And it's no different than here, but it's.
I think where the disconnect is, is I was asked to come to you with options, and so that's what I did.
Got you.
So I don't, I don't have any opinion in this. It's just, I didn't realize this is where we were.
So what I'm hearing, Susan, is, is we're coming up with a date that is a drop dead date for, for submitting the bids. Now, I mean, and also, we may need to take a look at what it's going to take to have a consultant look at these prior to being presented to the commission.
I think that, I would advise that, just, just because there are so many things that you have to look at.
Agreed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's clear now.
As mud.
Okay. Now we're ready for public comment.
Yeah, and I'm not going to present all the information that I wanted has not come in. But any Google search you want to do on it, go right ahead, pros and cons, and it's, it's a changing animal, like a lot of things right now.
I understand.
I bet you did. Yeah.
I have a public comment. Minor stuff. Wait, wait till you get up there.
I'm getting there. Yeah, I'm slow.
I'll let you go, so.
All right. My public comment is this on the mask mandate. I think the county overall has done okay. I like it that my county commissioners didn't shove it down my school board's throat on a mask mandate. They left it up to the local government, which is the school board who I vote for, and they did it to Fort Scott. I think that is a good thing, unlike the rest of the state and officials. But however, along with healthcare, and that's a part of the deal, it kind of amazes me, we look at wanting to bring people in here, and you think about it, we don't have a hospital, that's fine. But you've got young people coming in here, and, okay, I'm going to have a job, I'm going to have a family, but what do I got to do? If I'm going to have a kid, I got to go to Nevada, Allen County, or down to Pittsburgh. I mean, that's cut and dried. What amazes me further on this hospital issue is Allen County is talking about expanding. She knew, got a grant for $2 million to expand. And where are we at? And my brother is a medical doctor in a town that is half the size of Fort Scott and has a hospital. What's wrong with his picture?
Actually, when you look at the overall picture of this thing, the hospital pulled out because they were, they was not making any kind of money whatsoever. And now, and when they put this hospital in, they could not get critical care access at a late date. And without critical care access, they were not going to make the money that they needed to make to stay operational. It's the same way that, the reason the dialysis center went out, they weren't making money. You got to make money to keep an operation going, even though they're, a lot of them are heavily subsidized. Any other comments?
No.
No, thank you.
Well, I'll take up the whole time in.
I never said no.
What's that? What is a good reading, Mary? I don't have anything.
I, I just had the comment earlier that, that reading Fort Scott bids is my concern, but via Christie's comments, I hope before long, we know what their plans are.
For the emergency room?
Yes. I guess, reading that article, they said they wasn't moving CHC, and I hope they share those plans with us soon, because we need emergency room. So.
We do.
Well, I think, I'll speak a little bit.
Okay, good. Thank you.
So when it comes to emergency rooms, and it comes to hospitals, I mean, everybody seems to think hospitals make money. But they don't, very little. And therefore, they're no different than anybody else. They're a private business. If the business is losing money, they're going to shut it down. Now, if we as a county want to subsidize that to the tune of about $5 million a year, we can do that for a hospital. As far as the emergency room goes, those are a lot of government, state regulations involved. We can't just have St. Luke's come down here and put an emergency room in. We can't have KU come down here and put an emergency room in. That's not how it works. We are stuck with that being 35 miles, I believe. They have to have a standing hospital to have an emergency room here. So, you know, we don't have a lot of options. Via Christie's it. So, and as far as them, as far as them and CHC, that's between them two.
Right.
They're two private businesses.
Oh, I agree. I just hope that they share with us, and I'm sure they will, what their plans are.
There he comes.
There he comes.
The attorney.
We are very grateful for CHC and Via Christie being in our community. We're not wanting to pit either one of those two against each other. Commissioner Beth is completely correct. We, we are, by law, we have to have a standing hospital within 35 miles that can operate our ER. I think Commissioner Beth is also correct that we're going to have to have some discussions that we've had before, but we're really going to have to start thinking about what does subsidized healthcare look like in rural America. You know, legislatively, things have changed on some levels, but haven't on a lot. So things are going to have to move forward with the idea that we might have to subsidize an ER, because I think, like this fine gentleman said, without it, we can't. We're not going to be a normal community. I mean, an ER is vital. And so if that comes with a million-dollar-a-year price tag, that might be something we have to look at. So I think Commissioner Beth has done an excellent job of dealing and handling that situation, and it's very fluid. But obviously, it's very fluid, and things change dramatically day in from day out. And right now, the, the economy and medical is warming back up again because we've been in this pandemic, but we don't know what tomorrow's going to break. We have no idea what a week from now is going to look like based off what we've gone through. And for the record, Silver, so you could quote the guy, I finally understand, I was a history teacher in my prior life, a civics teacher, and I finally get to the 1920s. I finally understand why they happened, and I hope that that doesn't happen again. But, you know, we all are kind of boxed up and we're all a little crazy right now, and we're trying to chomp at the bit to have a normal life again. And for us, the medical thing that we dealt with pre-pandemic is probably going to have to start coming back to the forefront again and handling that. And it's not going to be fun for you guys, because it's going to cost money. I think that's what you're saying, Commissioner Beth, correct? That we're glad Via Christie's here, it's going to cost some money to maintain what we need to have, so.
And I agree, Commissioner Beth has done an excellent job, so.
I'm sorry?
That's pretty tame.
Well, thank you.
Well, the 20s are good though.
It's 2020, it's not.
That's all I have. I just had that question. I knew he's involved, but I've had several calls, and I wanted to explain to the public that, just share with them what we're aware of. We're aware with it, of it, and we're concerned too, so.
I think everyone is concerned about healthcare.
Yeah.
And Bourbon County, they really do.
Yep.
You know, of course, you know, you look, you look at, you look at where we were at a year ago in March. I kind of put it in context, it was the day the earth stood still. And we've been running that scenario for the last year.
Mm-hmm.
And now we're starting to come out of it on some fronts, but we're still not back to where we need to be.
Right.
So I got, the, the discussion will continue. And Clifton's done a great job at it.
He is doing a great job.
I mean, I think the public's just going to have to understand, these are public, or these are private businesses.
They are.
So.
They're all right.
They're not public. Their information, we just can't go get it. And I can't give all of it.
Yeah.
Or you can get sued.
Yeah.
Yeah, anyway, you get sued.
You can be in litigation.
I cannot.
Sounds like a lawyer speak. All right. Anything else?
I would say that they are very aware of the situation themselves.
Well, I'm sure.
Also. Both, or any, you know, I guess we have.
We got an emergency room, we got, we got a name and a service.
Yes.
We want to keep them both.
CHC, S.
They are all very aware of the current situation.
We want to keep all three of them.
But it's just two plus two in the medical world does not equal four.
That's it for me.
Don't print that, Jake. Talk about a Pandora's box there. Let's open that one.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay.